February 6, 2017, at 6:31, please rise for the pleasure.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Becker, how about you, sir?
I'm good, how are you?
I'm well so far, yeah, sure, have a seat. Thanks for coming in.
Well, thank you.
Sure.
I guess I just, this is the first time that we've met since being offered the position, so I want to take the opportunity to first thank the board for that. I'm honored by your selection and given the appropriate levels of cooperation and teamwork between all departments, boards, and committees, I'm sure that we can make a lot of progress going forward and meet any challenges that we may have. Back when the chairman called me a couple of weeks ago, he had, I had mentioned to him that as part of my decision-making process, I wanted to ask if I could meet with the board. So I appreciate you allotting some time on your agenda tonight to have me here tonight. The reason, again, that I wanted to meet with the board is part of my decision-making process, and the purpose for that was to ask some questions of the board that hopefully can help me gauge where the board's priorities are, as well as better learn about the board in general. Sometimes an interview session is a little bit formalized and we can't have a good discussion, so I just wanted to learn a little bit about how the board interacts and works and what some of your priorities are. So I want to apologize in advance, and that's an awful way to start a conversation with an apology, but I want to apologize in advance because I do have some questions, and I don't want this to kind of come across as me interviewing you, that's not what my intent is, but I do have some questions that I wanted to ask the board for a little bit of feedback on. So again, please don't misinterpret that as an interview process on my part. So if I could, the first question that I had for the board is outside of those day-to-day operational issues, the business as usual, oversight, things like that, of the town administrator role, which are pretty well-defined in the job description and on the job profile that the Collins Center put out, what is the board's number-one absolute top priority that you're going to be expecting of me? And as part of that question, within what timeframe?
That's a great question. Collectively or individually?
Yeah, I think just open conversation, I'm sure there might be differences, so I'm just trying to gather information from all of you.
Let's see. Open, honest, and transparent communication with the public. And we are in the throes of still budget deficit. Talking about and doing a merger, possible other mergers, more efficient way for government to run. There's a school project that may be hanging in the balance. Gosh, I was going to put on the spot. I mean, since I came on the board, it's been crisis management. I would love to see us not be in crisis mode anymore. You know, bringing, bringing boards together and departments together and, I mean, top priority, a balanced budget.
I get anything else?
Yep, from, you know, from my perspective, you know, a couple of, a couple of things is, you know, certainly the, you know, dealing with all the financial management problem that's going on, you know, getting, you know, the audits is going to give us a lot better picture and at least a starting point of, you know, where we've got to move from. But again, the crisis has been, you know, for a long time, we've got to get it under control. I don't want to see us though, you know, devastate our town's services to do that. So again, I think it's got to be a, you know, how do we accomplish financial solvency yet still provide a service to the residents that are paying taxes? So working out that balance, I think, is, is a high priority. Also, I think we need accountability. We have not had evaluation processes, there is no real accountability. So that's, again, I think, an area that we've got to focus on, is we've got to, you know, start doing accountability, that kind of goes hand-in-hand with the transparency. You've got to be transparent and accountable for what's going on. You have this rubber stamp methodology that's gone on for years and years and years, just, you know, doesn't really work. So those are probably a couple of the, the biggest and important things. You know, I'd like to see us rather than, you know, let government balloon, I think we need to look at how can we streamline and make things efficient. You know, and if technology is, is one of those avenues, it takes, you know, some investment to do that, so if that's an avenue we want to pursue, then we've got to figure out how to do that within our financial limits as well. So those are probably, you know, the three, you know, key areas that I would be looking at improvement in.
Thank you.
Well, I've been involved in local government in one way or another since 1970, and in those years, I never saw the disaster and calamity we had in two fiscal years here. There are 12, 13, 14 in that area. We've made tremendous strides in resolving those problems. A former interim town administrator got a financial team in place that work him well. I think that the town administrator has to come in and continue to professionalize government and people just assuming their roles and responsibilities and keeping the, the, the turn on the track.
I'm going to echo the same events, obviously, structure the community, looking at the structure itself has to be restructured in order to be more streamlined, more transparent for the community, to see what they're doing, what's going on, what their, what their taxpayers are, dollars are actually paying for. It's a well-balanced act between, obviously, I look at the TA as a chief procurement officer, I look at the TA as a chief financial officer, meaning you are, but you'll be ultimately responsible to oversight and see what's going on financially within the community, and obviously feel to do so, then obviously, you know, how things act. Accountability and responsibility for all aspects of the community, meaning other directorates having responsibility for their own budgets. Your oversight, your oversight, your, your budget's not balanced within your director, within that, within that, you know, directorate's responsibility, so to speak, i.e. you go over budget, you misappropriate funds, i.e. you do things that are outside your box, the realm of responsibility, then accountability should happen. Me personally, I think they should be fired, because if you become irresponsible, financially irresponsible, then those people need to be held accountable, and that's what doesn't happen here in this community, no one's held accountable here. In fact, what happens here, you, you get raises here, which that, that needs to stop as well. So, so there's a big, big thing, big shoes to fill, we have big issues to resolve, and we have short time to resolve them. You're looking at timelines, I would suspect anything less than 12 months would be, would be, would be perfect in my eyes, but do I see it that way? Probably not, you're probably looking at probably a three- to five-year plan, you know, to get this town on a railroad track that's going to be sustainable for the future. That's where I see.
All right, now, now, if I could-
Yeah.
-through the chair, when you say 12 months, is that specific to the financial challenges or a combination of the structural challenges, the financial challenges, the oversight challenges?
I think it's a combination of all three, and you, there's good staff that work here, there's good people that work here in the community, and they all want to strive for success with the community and the taxpayers. We all do, we all want to see the same thing, I think the taxpayers want to see it, the people that work in the community want to see it. So you won't have too much, you know, pushback, but again, change, people don't like change. You know, people don't want change, it's, you know, it's the status quo. But unfortunately, if you don't do change, and you don't do things the right way going forward, and have a solid five-year plan, then it's going to fail. The town will fail. I mean, I said that in my election speech I had at candidate's night, you don't need to be smarter than a fifth grader to see financially, if you have services up here, money's down here, you're not going to make it. That's, it's that simple. There's only two things you can do in this community, either you have to reduce services or you have to increase revenue. Period, that's it, end of story. There's nothing else you can do. I mean, you don't need to be that smart to understand that, but that's where we are.
Okay, yeah, and I kind of wanted to drill down on, again, if I could through the chair, is, you know, level setting and expectation setting is really important to me, because, you know, I think to have a good relationship right from the get-go, you know, I need to understand where you're all coming from as far as timelines and expectations, and hopefully have you understand what I feel is reasonable in achieving those. I do have a little bit of a concern that, you know, that 12-month timeframe for all of those items that, that were just listed out by the board, so hopefully we can maybe fine-tune some of the timelines around that. Certainly, I think there's, there's priorities around the budgetary issues, which may lead to resolution in a lot of the other areas, but, you know, I just wanted to kind of come away with, with a level setting. I don't, I'm not going to claim to come in and fix things in six months or in 12 months, but what I would hope to do is take incremental steps in working through the priorities that the board lays out, that I lay out with the board, to work through some of the issues that we have. If I could, I, another question I had, and actually, I had three questions that were all around that same type of topic, and I think you, through your answers, answered some of those other areas, so I'm going to jump up to another one that I had, and I am very worried because this one's kind of multi-layered. During my interview, I was asked about how I handle situations where not all people may have been happy with the outcome with a vote or a decision that I was involved in. Along similar lines, how does the board expect to handle situations where there is a split vote among the board? As a town administrator, I, I will need to follow the direction and execute policy based on the prevailing side of a given issue in those situations. How do you, as members, and potentially members on the minority side of those issues, anticipate handling situations like that when it comes to working with me and dealing with me when I have to execute policy you may not agree with? Kind of along those same lines, if I make a recommendation or offer an opinion or share information that may be in conflict with a prior decision or direction the board has taken, how do you anticipate dealing or reacting to that input that I may share with you?
Are you talking to Debbie Downer over here? I think that, I mean, I'm not going to speak for anyone else, but I'm a processor, Carter and I have gone through that, have we not? Some people are just, get things done, and that's not how I do things. Things are explained, and I guess I can say there are times where we've obviously had some controversial issues, and some of them are fairly easy. I've either been a no vote, or a, you know, you kind of have to pick your battles, sometimes it just makes sense to say yes and move forward with that. I don't really usually adopt a wait-and-see attitude, but I like to have that discussion, you know, you can, I can't really say I'm not a quick thinker, but I definitely, you know, like to do all my, as much research as I can. So I guess it depends on the topic and, you know, whatever that may be. With clear and concise communication, then it's a little bit easier to make any decision, yes or no.
I too, I think, am kind of a processor, I'm not one to make, you know, a quick snap decision, and I really dislike being presented with information for the very first time and being expected to make a vote on it. I, I'm going to vote how I believe, what I think is right, whether that's with or against everyone else, but I listen to all sides. I mean, I, I'm interested in as much discussion as there can be. You know, some, some issues are very black and white and are very easy, others are not. So I, I like discussion, I like input from, you know, what the other board members have to say, from what the TA has to say, what the public has to say. All of that input is important, and I need to be able to, you know, formulate a decision, you know, based on all of that input. Now, if I am in the majority, that's, that's okay. You know, government is set up to work as a democracy, so whatever the decision is, whether I'm for it or not, that's the decision we have to go with. So I'm not going to, you know, just arbitrarily, you know, not do something if it's the will, if it was how the vote went. So, you know, I have an honor decision that the, the board makes, whether I vote yes for it or not. But as far as your second part, you know, if you give me additional information, or if we have to make some other decision based on that previous decision, I would weigh the facts of what's this next decision we have to make.
All right, thank you.
Well, I think, basically, we have enough on our plate, if we make a decision, we move on from there. I can't see blowing, trying to foot-flop from one side to the other, week after week, nothing will get done. You make a decision, you move on.
Well, obviously, I, I'm kind of like the other board members, I have a pretty good decision-making process that I go through myself, being in the minority or the majority. You know, obviously, in the best senses of the community, at hand, that's it. Can we agree to disagree? Of course. I think all boards will have that point, and all, all selectmen will have that ability to agree to disagree, but as long as the information's out there that the people can understand, that we can understand to make accurate decisions based on the best senses of the community, then that's what we're going to do. And that's where I stand.
So if I could summarize, everyone, obviously, processes in their own way and is open to additional input. Mr. Columbus, you had mentioned that, make a decision and move on, but will, would there be instances where the decision maybe has already been made, but if new information is brought forward about it, that you'd be open to hearing about that? I mean, that too is the-
I mean, it's, it's a dynamic process.
Yeah.
You can't know everything all the time.
Right.
And things change.
Yeah, and that's kind of what I'm driving at, you know, things change and-
I know where you're going.
All right.
Yeah, thinking of what you put down.
We just had this municipal modernization, which changed a lot-
Right.
...the way business is done at the local level, so that's the dynamic, it's a fluid process. And I think what is incumbent upon us is to keep up with those things.
Absolutely.
Times change.
They do, yeah.
Anything else?
No, if I could, just a kind of a closing comment-
Sure.
-if I could, and then I know you have a full agenda, so I'll let you to it. But again, I just wanted to appreciate, express my appreciation to the board for allotting the time for us to talk here, it's kind of helpful to me and as we move forward in the process. As a side note, I also want to say that I very much look forward to working with the board, all town departments and committees in the town, I think we're all here for a common purpose, you know, whether we're a board, a town administrator, an individual, a concerned citizen, we all have, I think, when it comes to a town, the town, you know, we're looking for the best of the town and trying to do the right thing. You know, I know that disagreements may take place, and healthy debate's always a necessary part of the governing process, and it's my desire, just so the board knows, to try to work with everybody as, as best as I possibly can, formulate relationships that will allow us to make and drive at good decisions, and hopefully collective decisions too, in a spirit of cooperation. I sincerely hope, and I'm sure we all can, work together. I really look forward to meeting the people in Templeton, meeting the members of the boards and committees, learning a little bit more about you as well. So it's always kind of been my mindset in municipal government, to, to approach an issue, to, to make the best decision based on the best information, and to try to leave personal bias and any politically charged emotions at the door, to try to move forward. So that's, that's, I have every intention of taking that same approach here in Templeton, and I look forward to meeting with everyone and, and working with everyone in here in the town.
Great.
So thank you. I'm just going to migrate to the back of the room and listen to the issues at hand of the day, so thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Becker, appreciate you coming in.
Thanks for coming.
Discussion with sewer commissioners regarding general discussion of budget process, cost allowance, and audit statuses, various financial matters. Before you start, I have one question, was there, did you guys get your budget to the town administrator yet?
No.
No, okay. And that, that, what was that timeline, Mr. Tenzini?
Early January.
Early January, okay. So, budget was due in January, we're now in February, and is there an issue with the budget? Or is it, what's the issue with the budget? Is it the process that's the issue, is the budget the issue? I mean-
Process.
The process, okay. What's wrong with the process?
Well, the first thing is the due date.
Okay.
The town administrator, according to town bylaws-
Yep.
-does get to set the process, but when the process is set, or in this particular instance, the schedule is set so early that I felt it was deleterious to the overall success of the budget process. That's why it hasn't been submitted. And things, Carter and I were working well together, and then once we started getting into the budget process, we had and we have some basic differences in our understanding of what the roles of the board of selectmen are and what the roles of the board of sewer commissioners are. We bandied it back and forth quite a bit and didn't resolve it between the two of us. So as the budget process moved along, it's like playing a game, someone wants you to play a game and you don't agree with the ground rules, it's not going to go anywhere unless you're just kind of going on for the ride, I don't do that. So that's when I raised my concerns with my board, and also, you guys have copied with the emails, when I took objection to some of the things that were written in the weekly report, and then it just kind of has snowballed from there. I've had extensive discussions with my board, letting them know my reservations, and they see my perspective support me, and I heard a number of times 100%, and I said, you know what, that's not my purpose, is to be supported 100%. I want people to listen to what I have to say, evaluate it, my board, your board, Carter, and then make your own decisions. I'm not the policymaking person in my department, I understand, I understand my place, but my place is to make sure that the process, the guidelines that control this process are adhered to, and I don't feel that, the way the budget was moving, that that was going to happen, so.
Okay. Didn't the board of selectmen put the timeline, didn't we vote for that timeline for the budget process?
I believe so.
I think we did, didn't we?
I believe so.
And who makes policy here in town?
With respect to the budget-
Yes.
It's, the format is established by the town administrator-
Yeah.
-in consultation with the select board. As I read the bylaws-
Now, does, does the sewer department have special legislation, like the light and water department?
Not on this matter, Mr. Chairman.
So how do we, so how, what do you mean you don't need it? I know you get sewer commissioners, I'm trying to bring this myself, I'm not trying to-
Right, no, the light, the light and water department was formed under one of the chapter of the law.
Right.
The board of sewer commissioners were elected, chosen, and they operate under a different chapter of the law. Just because they don't have special legislation doesn't mean that they don't have powers that control the budget process. There's, and one of the, the main reason why I came here and I called for a joint meeting is because there's a lot of misunderstandings, and maybe it's on my part, some of it, wouldn't be surprising, I make mistakes, as to what the powers of the board of sewer commissioners are, what the powers of the board of selectmen are in respect to that, and also what the sewer enterprise, which is wholly different, what that mandates. But as to the powers of the board of sewer commissioners, Mass. General Law, Chapter 65, Chapter 41, Section 65, in Mass. General Law trumps all bylaws, anything local, states, "If sewer commissioners be chosen, they shall, as to sewers and drains exclusively, have the powers, perform the duties, and be subject to the liabilities and penalties of selectmen and road commissioners." So I think, to simplify things, if every place in the bylaws, you cross out selectmen and you write sewer commissioners, from that is separate to the sewer department, you would be adhering to Mass. General Law. So I agree that the town administrator has the power to control much of the budget process, but not without the input of the board of sewer commissioners. Where, in some of the emails that Carter and I exchanged, he said some things that caused me great concern, and this is the fine points of our difference in understanding. He wrote that the sewer, it's been decided by statute and bylaws that the sewer department has to follow the same process, the same practices, as general fund departments. That's not true, in my opinion. If the town voters inform the sewer enterprise under Chapter 53 F and a half, which they did, it's just a different accounting methodology, okay? But not a board of sewer commissioners, how would the budget be done? All right, the sewer superintendent would say, "Do your budget." I would do my budget, I would hand it over to Carter, Carter would look at that and say, "Well," or maybe he'd say, "It's okay," maybe he'd say, "Well, this line item here, no, we're not going to get a new truck, instead, we're going to take the truck away and we're going to put the money over here." Okay, that'd be his right. Once you form a board of sewer commissioners, like Mass. General Law wrote about, they now have the power to do that. Carter could come before the board of sewer commissioners and say, "Look, I saw Ken's budget, it's great, except for this, I think that you should change this." He can make recommendations, he can't make changes to that budget. Only the executive legislative body of the town, which is the voters at town meeting, can make changes. The selectmen can't make changes on the sewer department budget. They can make recommendations, just as the advisory board can, as any registered voters in town can, but it's, the budget is up to the sewer commissioners, and it's up to the executive legislative body, which is the town voters. And that is the major bone of contention in the budget process. This, there's smaller things like January 7th, such an early deadline for the budget. I think it's wrong to rush the budget for the sewer department because the town's in flux, Carter's short, short-term, as he was hired to be, he's going to be down the road. There needs to be input, but to say, "Well, you know, we're going to have a new town administrator by March, so I want to have all this much done on the budget by then," is putting the cart before the horse, or at least really pushing it down the road too fast, to the detriment of everybody. There can be give and take, but Carter and I have gotten to the point where there wasn't much give and take, we didn't see eye to eye, and that's, you know, professionally, it's so congenial, but we need to resolve that, and we haven't yet, so I'm going to do that.
Yeah, well, obviously, one of the issues that I can foresee is, obviously, we're looking at a potential new pump station with a $1.5 million budget cap, right?
2.3.
2.3, excuse me, right. Well, how do we know you, the enterprise fund has the funds to pay for that, if we don't know what your budgetary responsibilities are within the sewer department as a whole? That's my concern.
Sure, and that's very valid.
And as well as, I think the taxpayer is concerned as well.
That's 100% valid concern, and that's one of the things that would be answered in the give and take. And I, it's a shame that this joint meeting didn't happen back when we all were working towards having it happen. I mean, we didn't come tonight to be contentious at all, we came to try to find some ground we can move forward. And I presented my board earlier tonight with a draft budget. Soon as I present that at an open meeting, it's public record. Anybody who wants a copy, I brought one with me, and you can run off other copies, just know it's a draft. In there has a payment for the first USDA bond payment, $71,635 for next year, and then it's up to the board whether or not we want to set a amendment, or we want to take it out of sewer user fees, tipping fees, whatever, but we have alloc- But we have allocated costs for that. And it was actually just this morning, I've gone over this budget many times, as I do every year, but the reason why state law says that we have a hundred and twenty days before the end of the year, and, you know, I mean, that's what they say, we can give it earlier or whatever, and ideally, we would, but I never, ever start my budget until after January first. And the reason why, because we have a very fluid department financially, costs can fluctuate all over the place, and I like to have six months of current history to do my mathematical extrapolations. And, I mean, just, it was after January seventh, I believe, the deadline for submitting the budget, when we started hearing about the OPEB payment, you know, the indirect costs, which, we've come so far in indirect costs, in fact, Tammy Collins sitting there was towards the end of it. There was a while way back when the sewer department wasn't paying hardly any indirect costs, and when it was raised, we met, we did the give and take, and we're paying most of our costs now. We're moving towards what the town voters wanted when they voted for Chapter fifty-three F and a half and they formed the Board of Sewer Commissioners, is that we sit, not separate from the, from the town, but we're separated from the town, so people, as is intended by the Department of Revenue guidelines, that they can look at the sewer department and say, "All right, this is what it's costing me for the service," and that's what the DOR guidelines specify. So we guard against muddling that. The budget form that we are asked to submit our budget on this year, which is very, very different from years past, I believe works contrarily to that stated objective in the DOR guidelines. There's six pages buried in the middle of, between the selectmen's expenses and the accountant's expenses, and there's nothing but subtitles. So you get people that are laypeople that go to town meeting, and they see this budget, and there's six subtitles. If they don't bring a calculator, they're not going to know what the cost is for the sewer department. I mean, and I wasn't even sure that the warrant article would be separated out, the way that budget looked, that our warrant article appropriating all the money for our department for fiscal eighteen would be separated out. So, you know, everybody likes to say transparency, and it's a great thing, you've got to live it. And I'm not saying that anybody was trying not to live it, but because of the other things that we couldn't agree on, my imagination started running wild with me, and that's not a good thing.
Okay. So when you guys, as a sewer commissioner, you guys get audited every year? Or you guys roll in with the towns audit?
Towns audit.
Oh, you are part of the town, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. I'm trying to learn this myself.
Sure.
Because I know you, autonomy is autonomy, and I got that. I mean, I look at the water, I look at the sewer, I got it. I mean, I look at the light and water, I got it. I look at you guys, and I think working hand in hand and collectively together, that's where we need to be. Can we agree to disagree on certain things? Absolutely. As if we're, we're Americans, we're supposed to do that. You know, but, you know, we, we would like to see collectively, you know, budgets across the board for all departments, to even, to include the sewer department and the sewer commissioners. I mean, I understand what you're, what you're supposed to be doing, and I, and I think you guys are doing a great job. Do you guys have any ahead? Anything ahead?
Well, what is a better timeframe?
I'd say immediately, but we need to reach common ground on the things I just brought up, as to how our budget will be, it's developed now. I'll be working with the sewer commissioners after they review it in the coming days to fine tune it. Like I said, I don't mind giving you folks a copy of the draft tonight, and you have input into it. This is the time. So when we go to town meeting, we have collective opinions about it, and maybe, just like John said, we agree to disagree, that's the democratic process. I don't have a problem with that. The problem I have is that the information be presented in the way that state law, town bylaws, and the DOR statutes, and I went through the Mass. Selectmen Handbook, the good accounting principles that you brought up, and I have copies of those. I vetted everything I said here, my opinions, with black and white from the sources that we have to answer to, because that is our government. So if anybody says, "Well, Kent, I heard what you said, but I think it's a bunch of bunk," contact me and let me provide you, or even tonight, with copies of state law, you know, the bylaws, which, with the bylaws, you have to read them through to understand and act on them comprehensively, and I feel I've done that too much. So I'd like to move forward, I'd like to have it, I mean, with the Pleasant Street Pump Station project, if we don't, if you folks don't sign that loan resolution, I mean, tonight or the next day or whatever, and if that gets put aside, we're going to incur additional costs. And we've incurred additional costs in the recent past, in the not-so-recent past, because of actions on the town. And I want it so that these indirect costs, according to Matt, DOR guideline says that they need to be determined between the boards conclusively, and they need to be put into writing. So what I would like to see for the indirect costs is, Carter, the Board of Selectmen, give us what they think the indirect costs are. Other than that, I can't formulate a budget that I'm going to place any stock in if I do it and then all of a sudden I say, "Well, you know, geez, we got the OPEB payment, you know, that's come up now, and it's a month after the January seventh deadline." So there's got to be give and take to that, and that's, you know, in the DOR guidelines. But if your board doesn't act on the loan resolution, and we don't get the project done this year, which is very real, happening now, it's been since November twenty-second that the loan resolution papers have been in your board's hands, there's at least a month, if not six weeks, for USDA to close the loan grant program, and then there's a four to six-month lead time to construct this pump station, and they're not going to be putting it in in November, December, so the clock is ticking. If it doesn't happen this year, well, what's the downside of that? We're going to have to pay the engineers to do all the bidding, and the vetting of the bids again, we're going to have the advertising costs. We got a pump station that, in the first quarter of last year, I think cost us close to $40,000 in overtime because of breakdowns and stuff. Should the sewer users be expected to absorb those costs? That, as far as I know, there's only one reason for it, and that's because the selectmen haven't signed this loan resolution, and I'm not really casting stones, I'm trying to impress the importance and the need for expediency of it. This project, the Pleasant Street Pump Station project, we've planned it so that the sewer users pay one hundred percent of the costs, one hundred percent. We're not asking the general fund for one dime.
Taxation, no taxation.
Nothing. And that's the first major project in the seventeen-plus years I've been here where that's been the case. And I believe that we've worked that way because that's what the voters wanted, that's why they formed Board of Sewer Commissioners in, except the Chapter fifty-three F and a half. So we want to work with you folks, we just want to understand the guidelines, have everybody okay with them, and then move forward with all due haste.
Yep.
All due haste.
No, because we all have to work together, because obviously, the Board of Selectmen have to sign the resolution, right?
Right.
So we have to sign it, right? You guys, the commissioners can't sign that.
Right. And we know we're a part of the town.
Okay.
We have our powers, you have your powers.
We all have to work in the same sandbox for the same toys. So, as far as the timeline, do you have any else with the timeline?
Yeah, I have other questions.
Okay, please.
Sorry I talk too much.
No, so...
So, okay, so the timeframe may not be correct for you, but will we have a separate warrant article for them?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, so that's...
For an enterprise fund, it must be, that's a question that's very easily answered, if it had been asked.
Okay, does that make you feel better?
Yep.
The other thing is, is that, even though if we sign this resolution and move forward with that note, and you cannot make the payment, we are obligated to. So without a budget or revenue stream, how do we know that that can be done?
Because DOR makes provisions in their guidelines for when an enterprise comes short, when their revenues do not match their expenditures, and there's two things that happen. Number one, the enterprise must adjust their budget in the following year to, number one, make sure it doesn't happen again. Number two, repay the general fund. That's mandated to be done the next fiscal year, except under the condition that the deficit does not put the enterprise in an overall deficit, and that includes free cash. We have $750, $750,577 and one cent in free cash, by my calculations, working with the town accountant. So we'd love to pay everything we owe the town, because of glitches here and there in the past, but because the town's books aren't reconciled, and I know you guys are making great strides towards that, but that's the fact that we're dealing with, we can't use our bank account, that we've worked hard diligently, these guys have taken the heat by raising rates repeatedly because of the town's predicament. And we don't want to raise rates when we have the money in the bank, you know? That's just not responsible to our point.
So once our books are, I mean, based on emails that I've seen, I believe there was audit fee, and it is your game plan to pay that?
That's an indirect cost, and that's what we need to enter into discussion with. I think I've said that I, it is the board's decision, I don't have a problem with it. We've never been approached with an indirect cost that, after discussion, we haven't said yes to. The fact, the last discussion we ever had, Luanne was secretary at the time, was with Tammy and Carol Lee, and talking about their costs, and Tammy said, "You know what? The amount of hours I put in with you guys in a year, it's going to be, you know, two bucks a month, it isn't worth keeping track of." And Carol Lee nodded with that, so we agreed, as a whole, not to, you know, pay for the treasurer's washing, but everything else, I mean, medical, dental, you know, I mean, I've worked hand in hand with the selectmen's office, with Holly, well, property and casualty. We'll pay a hundred percent of our costs, and we're financially solvent enough to do that if we can avail ourselves of free cash. Do you guys, I know that the audits are supposed to be completed sometime February in the exit interviews and March. Have, do you have any idea of when free cash? When the books might be turned over to DOR, they may be able to certify free cash.
I hope we get it. Well, I hope that our audit is done by March sixth or prior to, because that is a deadline date that we have.
I don't believe that free cash and retained earnings will be certified until the fall of seventeen, when the seventeen audit...
So what's, I mean, you're talking June, December, next, next calendar year, or?
November, December would be my best estimate.
I mean, put it this way, the, all the money we owe the town, which is a sizable chunk of change, my opinion would be, once free cash gets certified, you guys hold a special town meeting as soon as you can schedule it, and my, yeah, my opinion would be pay a hundred percent of it, right there.
And that's where it is.
We don't want to, we don't want to work to the detriment of the town at all. We strive hard to work with the town, but we need to do that with a consensus, that's all.
So how, how do we, forgive me, John.
No, go ahead.
I've seen the emails, Kent and Carter, and I don't quite understand where the breakdown took place. So you need to communicate, you need to communicate, we need to look at a budget, we need to give you indirect costs, and how, how is that going to happen? Like, now?
And I think the budget that we follow, the timeline we're following is what the state's timeline, I believe, correct?
Yeah.
Go ahead, Ms. Kent.
May I? Yeah.
I'm not exactly sure how it fell apart, other than the sewer superintendent did not want to file his budget as requested. Now, fifty-three, the statute that creates an enterprise fund is an accounting mechanism. It does not create, other than it creates a sewer commissioner, which, like the cemetery commission, like the Board of Library trustees, has more policymaking authority for that particular unit. And there is a minimum drop-dead date by which the budget needs to be filed. That doesn't mean that's the only time. Earlier times can be set by this body and under the bylaw, which I attempted to explain to Kent, as town council has ruled, the bylaw refers to boards, officers, committees and such, and the sewer commissioners are officers of this community and bound by that bylaw. Now, certainly, we wanted the budget early because it takes some time to work all the way through it. In fact, there are a number of folks that think we are delayed on the timeline that we laid out. Some of this, I think, is frankly, a distraction. Are we going to see, is the community going to see all the subtitles? No, and that was pretty well clearly laid out in the memo, and all the department had certainly understood that. OPEB, that's something that came up recently. We'll certainly make a copy of that available to the sewer commissioners, and I would hope that the TA would work with them over the coming years as to how to get that funded. But it was never suggested that OPEB be funded in fiscal eighteen. That's a hit to the budget that they simply could not absorb at this time. So the early filing of the budget is to get a sense of where they're headed, to make sure that we've gotten to them all of their costs, that they've been able to account for those. The indirect costs are not always done on an hour-by-hour-by-hour basis. Certainly, if you have fifteen million dollars collectively, and the sewer budget is 1.5 million, that's ten percent, and you simply take ten percent of your accounting audit and the like, there's not a heavy lift on that. But that needs to have that discussion, because at the end of the day, it is the general fund that is the guarantor of their operating deficit. If they have a deficit, you have to add that to your recap sheet, which means you have to reduce what you expend on other things. Now, certainly, you know, it puts us in a difficult light that the audits aren't finished. And one of the things, because of that, I know that the sewer department owes the town around $150,000, give or take, and there's been a suggestion that as soon as they had retained earnings, just certify it and pay it all up. I had suggested that might not be in their best interest, it might be better if we could start getting paid something next year and work out a table, because if their retained earnings are certified at only $150,000, under that agreement, they've got to pay it all. We've already taken the hit. I think that we should work cooperatively on that. Likewise, the debt, and I do have a question on that Pleasant Street. Did you ever go to the capital improvement committee on that?
No.
Have you been to the capital improvement committee?
We've never gone to the capital improvement committee about any capital expense, and I've explained that to previous chairman of the capital expense committee, is because it doesn't impact the general fund. And they agreed with that, so that's changed.
Unfortunately, that's not the bylaw, and that is a problem.
Yeah, it does.
Mr. Chairman, as you know...
Yes.
Most recently, from another project, all capital projects, irrespective of their funding source, have to go to...
Capital planning.
Capital planning, or they cannot be certified by bond grants.
We just went through this with legal. Yes, what do you got for me, sir?
Well, I, I mean, I...
Just who I...
...thought that was special, Commissioner. I had a real question, and that's one of the reasons I questioned if we can really give you a budget at the time, when I was talking to Kent about it, when he talked about, he told me one of the suggestions were to make a, you know, pay part of it off in a regular budget. And I questioned the legality of that, because I thought normally, if you're going to pay back for another year, the process legally was to go to a special town meeting and pay it out of free cash. So I questioned, can we really give them a budget? Because if we put forth that budget, I questioned the reality of it, and I don't... I mean, I've seen towns that you go back and they actually say, well, hey, we're not going to pay that. And I'm sure other towns, if they could sort of hide it in their budget, I'm sure some would do that, but I don't think you can do that. I thought you had to do it on a special, I didn't, you had to do it out of free cash. I didn't think you could.
Then you pay it as intergovernmental, Mr. Chairman?
I did not think that you could take the money...
Kent, and the challenge here, if I might...
No, no, I'm just asking you.
Is that these are the kinds of questions that are better explored when one submits the budget in early January, and you have January... in early January, and you have January and February and March to have those discussions.
Well, you're saying you wanna, you know, you wanna budget bingo, give it to us. We're, we're saying, well, let's hash it out.
Number one, no, excuse me, excuse me, one second. Number one, it's not Mr. Tenzini's budget. We collectively wanted the budget. He didn't want, we told him what we wanted, under the direction of the guidelines of the state policy on the process of the budgetary responses. We collectively did. So, it wasn't, it wasn't Carter. He's just representing us collectively on day to day operations. So, we asked him that we needed the budget so we can see him, so we can identify where things are, where we're gonna be, you know, in March, and, you know, we're gonna, how things are gonna operate from this point forward. And with certain departments, we wanted to make sure, especially the enterprise funds, where there's debt that's out there, collectively town debt, which is over about eight million, soon to be almost $10 million, that we want to make sure the enterprise funds were able to collect those proceeds and to pay the debt that's owed. That's what we wanted. That's it in a nutshell. If you were, if, if you failed to meet the expectations of us by, by the timeline that we projected, then that's, then obviously, that's why we're here negotiating and talking about this, because it's important for us to know, so that townspeople can know, the advisory committee can know, everybody can know where we are and where we sit in the future.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Well, it's my question I have, I didn't think you could really do that.
You can.
In answer to what Carter said, when, when I said that we haven't gone in front of the capital planning board, it was mutually agreed upon. It wasn't me standing up and saying, "I'm not going because we're an enterprise and we don't take money out of general fund." I just explained why, and they were like, "Well, okay, yeah, it really doesn't make much sense for you to come before our board." I don't have a problem doing whether if it's a town bylaw. I mean, I wanna work within the system.
I know you do.
But the other thing that Carter said was it was just me not wanting to give my budget, and the sewer commission is a policy. That's where we came to the divergent path in the forest, and I won't quote, throw any, I won't hack up him anymore. But I have town council opinion from back in the day that we paid for, which says, and this is where Carter and I disagree, started to disagree and still disagree, is the select, the board of sewer commissioners isn't like any other commission. I mean, you can, give you a copy of Mass General Law. "If sewer commissions be chosen, they shall ask the sewers and drains exclusively," I think that word was put in there for very good reason, "have the powers, perform the duties, and be subject to the liabilities and penalties of selectmen." And the town council opinion that I have in front of me right now reiterates that. Based on the general laws and the town's bylaws, pound bylaws have changed since then, the commission does have the powers of the board of selectmen. So, we're not separate, but we are unique in that way, just like the Light and Water Commission is unique in another way, under a different chapter of the law. People confuse the two. I don't feel that I do confuse it, but when Carter and I couldn't agree on this groundwork rule, which we still are at logger's head with, and I respect his opinion, and I hope he respects mine, we needed to get that resolved, I felt, before we could go forward. Otherwise, we're just gonna, I think we're gonna get into a can of worms, bigger than what we have now. I really felt that, so I, I felt the need to get together, and, and you know what? I said earlier, I know my place in the hierarchy, I'm not the policymaking board, and I was taking this stuff on my shoulders and not sleeping it off for many nights, and I finally lit the fire into my bosses so that they understood my reservations. And I told, "Agree with me or disagree with me, I don't care, but you're gonna know what I think. And the same with your board. You guys make the decision, and I'll follow it. I will follow it, 'cause I, I don't want the responsibility anymore."
Well, we can't sign a resolution if we don't see some kind of budget. Oh, no, I won't say we, I won't.
Oh, is that a budget?
Well, I mean, do you understand why I would say that?
Definitely, definitely.
Okay, so, I feel, I feel like there's a lot of push and pull, which I have advocated not to have any longer. Me, I don't want your money. The rate payers, the ra, Tom, please, the rate payers pay that. So, it's not a question of how do we, without having this push and pull of, when can we see a budget? It was supposed to be by early January. What are, when you send the budget, what are the concerns that you have? I, I mean, I'd love to hear that, and then what are, you know, what are you waiting for from, from us? And then we can have, not me, the town administrator, and you have those conversations, and we can certainly take a look at that, but to sign off on a half a million, well, I'm sorry, it's over a million, and with a half a million or two million, sorry, you know, but to not know what the bottom line is, and yes, we've, you know, ultimately, okay, so, at this point, we're, you know, I don't, I wanna see the emails, not, they have to stop. They just, they have to stop, and we have to figure out how to do this logically and correctly, and however, you each have a different of opinions, so how are we gonna do this?
One thing, one thing that has to be done tonight, that, it has to be signed. We have to go forward on this.
I understand that.
A hundred percent, because we can, we can talk hundreds of thousands of dollars, and I don't care if it's fines or repairs, this station is over 40 years old, like, 65, 70% of all the town sewer goes through it. It's forever fixing it, fixing, fixing, and it has to be repaired.
Yeah, I do remember that we had a meeting, and we looked at all this documentation, and I did not realize that it's been since November, that we have not brought that up again. Okay, so, I had asked in the beginning of the year that we have a section that it lists out old business, and this probably should have been on there, so that we did not forget about it. So, if we didn't have a budget, because that's why we didn't sign it, I guess I would have liked to have known that.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I think that, Tom, going forward, to me, I mean, we need to hash and trash the budget, and a few folks, we're at the development stage now. If there's recommendations that Carter has, the board of selectmen has, then, I mean, whether I agree with them or not, I mean, we can have a little bit of verbal exchange, but I'll say, "Well, sorry, Kent, don't agree with you, you're wrong. Present this to my board, make the decision." Same with the indirect costs, but we've never gotten, gotten anything remotely like what's specified in the DOR guidelines, that we should, you know, they should, the indirect cost should be determined, they should be written down, agreed upon. Everything was arbitrar, arbitrary is too strong a word. Everything was floating up in the air, because basically Carter and I have this misunderstanding as to what the powers of the board of sewer commissioners are. He thinks that they're basically a policy-setting board and to do with day to day operations, and they're much more than that, as stated by Mass General Law.
Okay. We're not gonna disagree with that, yes, Mr. Chairman.
As you're aware, the sewer commission asked the advisory board to come. I have a couple of questions that I'd like to have clarified by the board, and also some comments.
By us or by them?
By the board.
Okay.
Is that, in, in just a short period ago, another enterprise ended up coming in for a million dollars. You didn't look at their budget. You have no authority over their budget. Then I look at Mass General Law 44, 53 and a half, and it says this, "Appropriate local entity responsible for the operation of the enterprise. Are you, as selectmen, responsible for the enterprise, the operation?"
No, we're just responsible if they don't pay the.
That means that the commissioners are responsible party. Prior to that, it says that the budget is supposed to be sent, sent to that particular entity. It's right there in chapter 44, 53 and a half.
That's to you, Mr. Chairman. The budget comes to you.
Yes, it comes to.
Later on, that budget, and it has not been a problem, has always come to us as advisory board when we have asked for it within the period of time, the 120 days. It has never been an issue, except at this particular time. We've gone to that meeting, asked for the budget, they've come to the, our, our meetings, we've gone over those budgets. That could also have been done by the selectmen at that particular time. They can end up trying to, they can end up seeing their budget and end up not giving them some information for them to take and clearly do their budget is an issue that you have to resolve between the two of you. I can't, I can't.
Thank you.
But I do have one other question, is how do we pay prior year's budgets? I have bills for sewerage. What's the process there?
What are you paying your bills?
I mean, if you had a prior year bill, what would be the process for payment of a sewerage bill?
It'd be a warrant article, town meeting.
I don't understand what you mean by prior year. I understand what you mean by prior year.
So, meaning, to pay a bill from last year, you would have to have, you would have to go to town meeting to, to appropriate funds for the current year to pay bills from last year.
That's correct, that's correct.
That's what he's saying. So, like, we did this past open town meeting, there was bills that were due from last year that we had to use current operational funds from the sewer department to pay last year's bills.
That's correct, right. That's the process for doing that. If you look, and, 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 and Kent is absolutely right, because we, as advisory, looked into this as to what, and we asked that question, by the way, about debt. And the, the answer is in Mass General Law on paying debt.
It is.
It says that if they do have a debt, that in the following year's budget, they ask, they can end up appropriating that within the budget. You've also heard them also say that they have additional funds.
Right.
That is the question that the board should ask, is if they have the additional funds to pay, and get the answer, yes.
Well, that's what we're working on.
That should be, that should be, the, the question that the board has about the budgeting process and, and, and the bill that they wanna end up going off and creating for, for the town. And also, I mean, I, I mean, I'm trying to take and end up letting you know some things that we have already gone through as far as advisory, and asked a lot of, a lot of the hard questions. It's unfortunate that this board of selectmen hasn't come to any of the meetings and taken, heard those in the past. There's other boards that hasn't come. I, I don't wanna take and end up just saying in this particular year. Those questions have been asked and satisfied. I've been on the board long enough to take and end up knowing what the process is and ask the hard questions. You've heard me ask the hard questions of you.
Yes.
That's, that's the board of, that's the, the, the job of the advisory committee, to take and ask those questions so that we can end up making good decisions.
Okay.
You should be doing the same thing, and that's kind of what I'll end up leaving you with as far as the entire process.
All right, great.
I think this is, this has gone way beyond what it should be.
It is, I'm, I'm gonna end it right here. Yes, Tom, go ahead.
Well, the question I have, based on the input that you've heard
Yep.
and from Will and us, there are two issues. The tardiness of the budget aside, just, we need to, okay? Would you agree that, based on what you've heard tonight, that it's the duty of the sewer commissioners or the sewer commission to submit a budget which you may input to, but not change? That's my question. Would you agree with that statement? We submit a budget to you, you may comment on it, input on it, make recommendations, but once it's finalized, you may not change it.
Me personally, or as collective as, hold on, yes, Kelly.
Well, I just wanted to make just a statement. In FY '15, you know, we have the shortage of the $130,000, that their budget was short.
Right.
In FY '16, we have the shortage of the $66,000 for bills that they had that were prior year, that were not encumbered. They didn't even have $66,000 to encumber. So, their budget now, two years in a row, has been short. So, I think that it's, it's very, I, I just want.
One second, Tom, hold on, Tom, one second, go ahead, Kelly.
I just want to say that I think that it's important that the budget really needs to be looked through thoroughly on all parties, not just you guys, and not that you're gonna change it, but I think that it needs to be evaluated thoroughly to make sure this doesn't happen in FY '18.
Okay, yes, Tom.
Let me comment on that. First of all, you didn't answer my question yet.
Okay.
I know you're thinking about it.
I am.
But the hundred and something thousand dollars in arrears.
Hundred and thirty.
You are aware that was caused by the town. That was a spreadsheet error, that whoever made that spreadsheet didn't do it right, made a mistake, and caused that row of dominos to fall down.
Mm-hmm.
Now, we, we have offered to pay back that money out of free cash en masse, one-time payment. Carter, Carter expressed the opinion, if I understood him right, that he'd rather see that in payments out of operating budget. No, because it can't be done. We'll have to raise a sewer raise, because our budget is very tight.
Okay.
Okay, so, the question, I repeat the question, though. Would you agree that, once a budget is submitted, you may input, make recommendations, drag your feet, holler and scream, but once it's finalized, you may not change it? Now, you're, you're kinda holding the, the Pleasant Street pump station hostage right now because of that. I, I understand, but if, if that doesn't get signed, there's gonna be very large expenses, possibly fines, and if that pump station breaks down, you're gonna have a lot of people banging on your door wanting to know why they can't flush their toilets.
Understood, if you have anything.
Well, I didn't read the law, but yes, I would tend to agree with you.
But I wanna hear it.
I'm not holding the Pleasant Street station hostage. All I said was, I need to see plus and minus.
I think it's in front of you.
Thank you, but we did not have that before.
Okay, we, we understand tonight, too.
Well, that's, that's why, I mean, we have to agree to, maybe sometimes even disagree, like I said before, we have to agree to the fact that if we collectively want all the directorates and all the departments to turn in a budget on a specific timeline, that we want all, the same thing to happen for the entire town across the board, is that something that we can work on to get through? And I understand your point, too, but is that something that we can work towards for next year? To be on the same timeline across the board collectively for the entire community, all departments, all directorates?
Definitely, as long as there's some discussion associated with that.
Listen, we know that, we know that the budget to live and breathe and documents are gonna change day by day, all the way up to the time we get to town meeting. We understand that, we embrace it, we embrace this, just like everybody else.
Well, and, and the point I'll make is that never seventeen years I've been here has the budget been asked for at such an early date. Does that specifically rule out that it makes sense and that it could happen? No, I think with all the associated things that have been discussed tonight, and literally hundreds more, yeah, it did make it not the best thing. And I understand Carter had probably very good reasons for doing it, but the fact of the matter is, the sewer enterprise budget is different from other general fund budgets.
It's a very complex budget.
And a lot of these questions could have been answered without the budget necessarily being delivered. Like, well, Kent, we think the indirect costs are gonna be this here, what do you think? And we wanna make sure we have reservations about bond payment for, the first year, bond payment for Pleasant Street. And the issues that Kelly brought up, like I say, this is incredibly complicated. We finished last year, we couldn't have paid the unencumbered funds out of the appropriation. I understand that we would have been $36,000 and change short, but there's reasons for that, too. And all the reasons for that don't fall on the shoulders of the sewer department. We went through a period where we had three different entities in this building billing us three different amounts for medical and dental, which, as everybody knows, is a huge part of everybody's costs. There was questions about that that didn't get resolved. I budgeted to the best of my ability when the information at my disposal came up short. There was other issues, too, with bills that we were getting from the town. One of, we got billed in one fiscal year for a bill that wasn't due until the end of the next fiscal year. I raised a question, I'm like, what is this?
Is that called the same when you bill the town for stuff? I mean, you guys bill the town for sewer usage as well, correct?
You mean like?
Like Town Hall and.
Sure.
Town Hall, Highway 5.
So, like I say, it's just, it, it's very complicated, and we've worked to resolve a lot of these things. I called for a meeting with Carter, with Kelly, with Kate about what Kelly was just alluding to. And the encumbering problem, the encumbering changes made five business days before the end of the fiscal year. I was on vacation that week. I actually came back on Monday to attend a conservation committee meeting about Pleasant Street, but I was damned, I had other things I wanted to do on my vacation on the night that they were gonna discuss, that Kelly had scheduled, it was Wednesday, middle of the week, she had scheduled the encumbering meeting changes. And I didn't go to that, and by the time I came back, there was two days left in the fiscal year, and we had our senior administrative assistant who'd been out for six plus months, and I had a part-time person who wasn't fully trained, so there's reasons these things happen. I'm not making excuses, they're reasons.
I got it. You have something, Joe?
No, I, I think there is one thing that hasn't been brought up. Basically, that this board owns, we own the town meeting warrant, which gives us a lot of discretion with to, for may or may not be one of them. If there are conflict with this, probably, I don't know, but I'm pretty confident in the fact that But I'm pretty confident in the fact that we do own the warrant and it gives us a lot of discretion as to what appears on it.
How's the conflict? I don't see the conflict.
I'm just saying that this board decides what goes on the warrant.
I know, I understand that. How's that a conflict, though? I don't get it.
Well, I mean, if we decide we want something else on the warrant, I would say with.
Okay.
You know, without getting into too many specifics, that we have a lot of leeway as to what appears on the town meeting warrant.
Are you, are you saying specifically that sewer department budget, if you didn't like it, then you could change that because you control the warrant?
I don't know.
Yeah, well.
Well, if that's what you're saying, I, I just believe that you're misconstruing your power. You do, the selectmen do control the warrant one hundred percent. But that doesn't, that doesn't.
I'm not construing anything.
Well, I am. I am, and I'm just, I'm just, I'm trying to read behind, between the lines a little bit, maybe I'm wrong in doing that. But if what you're alluding to is that you not only have control of the warrant, but you have control of the articles within the warrant, I believe you're mistaken.
I didn't say that.
I gotta take a two minute, I gotta take a two minute recess, two minute recess.
Second session. Sorry about that, everybody. That news comes all the time. All right, where were we?
I wanna say.
No conflict, yes.
I want you guys to think about something. I know there's money, short money to float the boat. But if you get the sewer commissioners and the other boards to pay indirect costs, that has gotta go.